Why don't you let everybody in? Yes, and I think you may need to make her a. Full pilot, full couple. Full spare. No.
Not not that.
You know, my meeting started, so one of my kids.
One of my kids.
Want to come in, because my meeting just started.
Oh, gosh, is that from Vegas or anything?
What are you doing?
Someone's.
Did you mean?
Who's the?
The voices. Sorry. They're going in the symbol phone.
I just needed everybody. Good grief. That was all that. That was a lot.
Yeah, I muted it. Where's they?
Where'd you go?
I'm still there.
No, I want to make you a host.
Oh.
Every time I click it, it changes.
Don't put on on mute.
These people are always on hand.
No, I'm just gonna. Make you a host so you can share.
I'm gonna use the like McCoo four minute method.
Oh, the wait until you.
Wait minutes after.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that was my method, but.
I'm I'm.
I might not be right.
I stole it directly from. Stole that from you, shock absorbers, step and.
Use it, Will.
They say they say.
I haven't TM'd it, yes.
They say that pretty much all ideas have been used more than once, and I think they really originate from anymore.
Or they say all 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 the stories, you only use twenty nine different blocks or something along that.
Well, that's not optimistic enough, people.
Sounds like a plagiarist line to me.
Now, look at that, everybody. I'm ready to be president of the.
That's the model of plagiarism defense.
That was fine, I don't care. So. So.
I'm looking all right.
Now, all my papers went through all that searching stuff.
Oh, good.
They ran it through all the software.
There are programs.
One of my college papers got like a ninety two percent plagiarism violation rating on it. Because the search, the search had found my draft of the same document. And it made the report and said, you have not plagiarized ninety two percent of your paper from this paper, and it showed the same paper. Oh, yeah.
Kind of reassuring in a way.
I liked.
But there's that eight percent.
I liked the idea of draft, and I tweaked it eight percent.
Oh, okay.
Just careful how you're doing that.
Okay. I'm calling order the meeting of the kind of Wellington Board of Selectmen for March eighteenth, twenty twenty four at six P M. If you join me in the pledge. Please, through the flag, of the United States of America, and into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The minutes are in the package. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I think a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting.
I have second. I'll stay. Okay. Any changes you saw? I think I think we both were.
I just put them on your bill.
This is in made.
The change on that piece of paper that I put in your book, it's in here now.
This one here?
Yeah. We need to change that section of of the call for the the charge for the Emergency Services. These committees committee to reflect the actual draft.
All right, the actual draft said eight. Um, and it's ten. Including one Board of Selectmen and one Board of Finance members. So with those changes.
I just like the yeah, just like to comment that there's two public interest or public participation things we covered last time. One was the Wellington Day Committee, and the other one was the spaghetti dinner for the. Let's see, the nostalgia. Um, urge all citizens to participate in well, just to put up bad information in these things, people will see it.
All right, good.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye, opposed, abstention?
Aye, abstain.
So noted. Present to speak, public participation is encouraged. Speakers are limited by appropriateness, staying on topic, and maintaining decorum. Time may be limited to maintain progress. Please reserve time during the meeting if you during this time or during the meeting, if you wish to speak to a specific agenda item. Is anybody here present to speak? Dave.
Dave Piranha, twenty two, Wellington Hill Road, I want to conspire some concerns on the. Fire Department's Committee that you put together. I would like to make sure that anybody that's on that committee is a town resident and a taxpayer.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Uh, Mr. Tullis.
Oh, good evening, everyone, Ralph Tullis, forty seven Village Hill Road. I just want to reserve some time for item eight C and and nine A.
Eight C and nine A, okay.
Other than that, nothing to say at this this juncture.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall, yes, I'm here to speak on the regarding C I P plan, as well as the Emergency Services Building Committee, or whatever time is needed for you.
Okay, I've reserved your time.
Peter. Yes, sorry. Bruce, Bruce Lawler, for the road, Wellington. Um, in regards to the idea of an Emergency Services Building Committee, it appears that the lessons learned with the school building committee have been forgotten. Money spent on studies and designs, time spent by townspeople pondering that issue, will need to have a better referendum. Those resources would have been best spent tending to our neglected schools. Before any consideration is given to establishing a building committee, perhaps an Emergency Services Committee should be established to study and make improvements on on how our two departments provide services to our community and work together. First, let me start by saying that I have the utmost respect for our town's first responders. It is a difficult job that comes at great personal cost to those members. We currently have two separate departments that are private entities with a contractual agreement to provide services to our town. The town funds these two entities, and the town should have a direct say. In regards to how and where these services are provided to our community, presently, this is not the case. Every five years, the contract is renewed with, I believe, two thousand twenty five, being the next year, it is up for renewal. Before it is next renewed, a great deal of consideration should be given in regards to how these two departments function, and if they function together or independent of one another. We have two departments with two chiefs, each with their own staffs and equipment to provide the services they provide. One department is volunteer, and the other is not. Would we be better served with a single company providing services? Would we be better served with two companies, one providing fire service, the other providing ambulance services? Should the department be volunteer? And so to study mutually should be considered as an example, Department One for fiscal year two thousand twenty three to twenty four. Their ambulance conducted seventy two calls to Talon, but Talon returned to us with one call. The town of Talon does not provide evening coverage to their own town, we do it for them. Union, we made forty eight calls, but Union returned to us with zero calls. Stafford received forty four calls, we in turn got twenty seven. Basically, we subsidize services to these other communities at the expense of our taxpayers. As far as the composition of any committee goes, I mostly agree with the ideas that Jim Marshall, Marshall presented to the selectmen, but with one exception, I believe that anyone who sits on such a committee must be a citizen of the town of Wellington, especially our first responders. Again, I request that before any consideration is given to establishing a building committee, that an Emergency Services Committee come first. That could lay the groundwork for considering if new buildings are required, and even if the current locations of our departments best serve the community of large. Thank you.
Thank you. I I'd just like to note that there is an Emergency Services Efficiency Committee that's been in place for the last four years. We've been meeting approximately once a month for the last three years, and prior to that, we were meeting twice a month. And those those minutes are available. Mike?
You just covered mostly what I was gonna say. I think all parties have brought up a lot of good topics, and this should be part of the conversation. And I wanted to assure. Mr. Lawler, that the this efficiency committee does exist, and it does talk about exactly those things. It talks about how are the departments integrating their work and their training, command structures. Um, and that, and a previous effort before that, that was done probably about fifteen, eighteen years ago, did bring together a lot more of the functionality of the departments working together. And to try to work on reducing duplication, and I think those same concerns continue to travel through that committee and this potential building committee also is is, and most of those people are taxpayers, so. I I don't want mine going up anywhere.
I understand. Anyone else online? Okay. Uh, correspondence. We have any correspondence? Well, we have one correspondence from from Mr. Marshall in regards to the Building Committee, and one from Mr. Troyer in regards to the Building Committee, of which I've taken note. Um, this is the minutes, so. That. I think those are correspondence, doesn't it, Troyer now?
No, Troyer, I don't have any Troyer.
That came in later.
That came in, yeah, I believe today.
Okay, and we have. Uh, Mr., I think this came to the. The Maloney's.
Oh.
Correspondence as well, right?
Yeah. Then, I'm sorry, that didn't get it.
That's okay.
Back then, after the attendments.
Yeah, good, so maybe we can take forward that to each bus.
All right. First Amendment Status Report. The water contract, the the water contract with the Senior Center, as you know, has not been renewed for several years or reconsidered over the past. I believe six to eight years, we've we've been spending ten thousand dollars at a time, a year to cover the shortfall in the contract. Uh, by contract, we can't charge them more than thirty thousand dollars a year. And costing the town about forty thousand dollars a year to provide them with water, so we need to redo that contract. It's at the lawyer.
Is that the Senior Center or Wellington Woods?
Wellington Woods.
Okay.
It's 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 all, all the water goes in there, and then they have separate meters, and then it's divided by population in the meters. And the business office separates out who owes what, and so that contract is supposed to be reviewed every five years, I believe. And it has yet to be reviewed, so we're reviewing. To further motivate us on that, the septic pumps have started to go. And so the water has to go out as well as come in, particularly once it's been used. Um, so.
I'm sorry.
Okay. In your serious face, I'm sorry, that's all right. Uh, one of the pumps has been replaced, and it just turns out we have another eight thousand dollars worth of work to do to make sure that the second pump doesn't drop to the bottom of the. Because if it does, nobody wants to swim for it. So I just signed the work order on that for eight thousand dollars. Uh. So we're working on that, the the lawyers got it. The Bolton Assessor Contract. We found a couple of different problems with the draft contract that we got from Bolton. First of all, they want us to renew. A year before our contract expires. Secondly, they want to raise our rates, they're supposed to raise our rates about three percent, and they're asking for a thirty one percent raise. So I'm not happy with that. And thirdly, they're charging us for. Training in the new contract, and apparently they were training, charging us for training under the old contract as well, so we were going to have to work with the town of Bolton and the business office to figure out what we're gonna do for that, so there may be a an adjustment in the. Uh, Board of Selectmen budget coming up here, as far as that's concerned. But until we figure that out, I think we should hold the, for prudence, we should hold a higher number to make sure that we're not in a bad space. You 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 appear to have a question.
I, what, is it okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, it's in the budget as a twenty eight percent increase.
Yes.
Over year. That just seems, I mean, that just seems like a ton. A and B, you know, given the new information about it being a year early.
Right.
Oh, I I don't, are we contractually bound to go up?
That's, these are questions that that appeared this afternoon.
Okay.
So I haven't had time to wade through them yet, and as soon as I can, I will, I will certainly be in in touch with the Board of Finance. Because I I, you're right, twenty eight percent raise is, it was like a thirty one percent contract increase, and it's 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 ridiculous, so.
Well, and not only that, I think the news we got last Thursday, down wide for the impact on the budgets, is puts us into a different ballgame in a way.
When you say that, you're talking about the education, yes.
Special ed cost going up two more students.
Yes.
Than what we thought, the highest number we've ever had for outplacements.
Right.
So transfer, so so my question is, is there anything that a first selectman of a small town can do in a situation like that to push back on some contract increases anyway?
Yes, oh, I plan on it, I plan on it, I I just have to, you have to give me a chance to push back.
I I know, it just happened, Pete, I understand that, I'm just saying, the assessor one in particular seems. Really, I don't, I don't understand it, I don't understand it, except I know we have a newer assistant assessor, and that person is lined up for more training to get that.
Yes, but that's a different budget, that's a different line item.
Okay.
So I, give me at least a couple days to 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 friggin' tread water and figure out what I'm doing.
Could I provide a brief historical on this assessor position with the structure of Bolton? I was chairman of the Board of Finance when the last contract was negotiated, and the discussion with the first document at the time was that. And and I don't disagree with any of this, that that there was a value in shared services, sharing an employee, because you potentially had the availability of a full-time employee. In other words, if they were on the hours that might have been assigned to the other town, they still could answer the phone if there was a problem. And there were some other advantages of it of having access to a full-time employee.
Right.
And so you were paying essentially part-time hours to get a full-time employee in certain ways. The disadvantage, of course, was because they're a full-time employee, you're not paying just part-time hours, you're paying for all the benefits and everything else that comes. Your share of the benefits that come with a full-time employee, and the the even more complicated balancing act was that the question was raised at the time, well, if the other town is doing the hiring, they're essentially committing to hire a full-time person, which they become responsible for that salary based on the contract with us, what happens? Why would they take that risk? And the answer was, that's why we have to do three years at a time, because it gives them time to understand if that risk is gonna go up, because we're backing out of the contract. Uh, which is probably why they're asking for the one-year advance on the renewal too, so they can figure out where to get the money, or if they're gonna lay off an employer, whatever their solution is, I don't know.
Yeah, I I don't, I I don't know their thinking, because I mean, I can't.
So that was the conversation at the time when this contract was signed. There are benefits, but there are definitely risks with this, and I think we're seeing some of the risks right now.
We can build in, and we can build in an exit, the same way I have an exit with with Region Nineteen, we have to give so much time if we're gonna exit the.
Well, I believe my understanding was, and I didn't read the contract, that was what I was relayed, was that at the end of the three years, we had the opportunity to exit, but that Bolton obviously would be carrying a full-time employee, it wouldn't. That would be a big gulp for their Board of Finance to, you know, pick up that over half.
The the other problem is 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 this is not a problem unique to Wellington, is that assessors are hard to come by. There's three areas where Krog is working to regionalize building assess, assessors, building officials, and and animal control officers, because all three of those positions. High turnover, that, not only high turnover, but the need for full-time people. And isn't there, so you you have to have training and equipment, and so you gotta have people, and so they're trying to regionalize that, that's another thing that I'm I'm attempting to work on, but regionalization does not come easily to the client board. Water test. Oh, water testing. Uh, water testing is required by state law. And to show our copper and lead levels, and so we needed a contractor for that, and White Water provides our water is one of the authorized testing agencies, so it was not a huge ask, so I just renewed our contract with them to test our water. Which is posted upstairs. Um. That concludes that part of my report. The Department of Public Works update. They did roadside mowing and worked on, they they've got their new sweeper, it's been delivered, and they're getting it ready to go, they've got two years' worth of brushes, I think that came with it. They picked up logs around town from tree contract work, particularly the larger ones that homeowners put in work themselves. They patched potholes, took care, prevented maintenance on their trucks, fixed the gate at the transfer station, which I didn't even know was broken, so that's good. They did tree net, tree cleanup at Hall School from a tree that fell on the baseball field. They're currently working on the twenty-ton trailer. Uh, they've got it sanded, painted, then rewired, and the lights are now working, so thumbs up for that. Uh, they've done shop cleanup and maintenance, they had N four come in and look at their something, and decide that it was fine and not do anything, and checked it off and left. Which did not make our Public Works Director happy. They dug out clogged waterways and culverts, and they had the garage catch basin cleaned out by a contractor. So that's Public Works. New business. The Registrar Revised Emergency Plan Approval. You have the original?
Yes.
I don't I don't have it in my file, so I cannot have the original. So. Every. Now and again?
Do you want me just to say?
Yes, please say a few words to that.
Christine Soffis, Registrar and Voters. In twenty thirteen, the Secretary of State asked that all registrars throughout the state come up with an emergency contingency plan to address things like ballot shortages, power outages. What happens if the fire alarm goes off at your polling place? So at that time, Gail Kapinos and I came up with a plan, submitted it to the Board of Selectmen, and it was approved. Now that we have early voting in place, the current Secretary of State said that the registrar is needed to update the contingency plan, emergency contingency plan, to include early voting. Again, what happens if we have ballot shortages, loss of power, weather or other national, uh, national, weather or other natural disasters that occur? So what you have in front of you is our update to our emergency plan, and this then, hopefully with your approval, uh, will be submitted to the Secretary of State, and will be in compliance with her suggestion on getting these to her.
You you've had a chance to read this and sign in.
Yes, I have.
All right, excellent. Thank you. The, you had a question on power outages and and generators, it's answered, okay. Also, we can move, we've got an emergency polling place at the Fire Department with a generator, so they can move over there if it's longer than a short-term power outage. Uh, leave the hill, right? Uh, so, can I hear a motion to accept the emergency contingency plan for election, primary referendum, and early voting?
There's a motion to accept, I'm not gonna say it.
There, that's all I need to do. I say. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The plan has been signed. If you could hand that off. Thank you very much, Christine, and we will forward those of the appropriate part of the minutes to the.
Oh, yeah.
To you, so you.
We made you the copy of the minutes just to let Secretary know that it's been rocking for the board, and it's been approved. And I'll take, I'll take all of those when you get them, no rush.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you just make me a copy of that?
You can have, you can have Andy's copy at the end of the.
No, I just want a copy of the long signatures.
Both doors are locked, and you just happen to be here with all the leaving, get get in, it's doing much unlock door like any other people. I guess it's just us.
This one unlocked, right?
All all the.
All the doors are locked.
No way to get in, nobody out.
That one's, the back door's open.
I tried the back door by social services.
Here, here.
The main back door over here by four minutes.
It's gave in. Okay.
All right. Assessment. We have to do the assessment. Hi, Kara.
Right.
We have to get that contract signed. Uh, it's been sent to the lawyer. As soon as we get that approved, we will be signing the assessment contract. Is that all you needed for that?
Um, yeah, but what we, time is of the essence.
Yes, yeah, I I I understand that, and if I don't hear from them soon, I will, I will. I will motivate them.
Thank you.
You think it'll be maybe by the end of the month?
I was hoping by the end of the week.
Okay.
I, you know, that's what I'm hoping, and. That. Three dollars will give me a coffee. Uh, tax stabilization ordinance. Uh, let's see here, yes, Mike, first, Ralph wanted wanted to speak to this topic, but I think you should introduce it first, if you put, Ralph, you still on?
I I am still on, and I I I would welcome Mike outlining this for everyone before I should say anything.
Okay. Somebody's got a bad connection, but go ahead, Mike.
Um, so as some of you may know, others not, about a year and a half ago, a company by the name of Key Capture Energy approached the town regarding a an energy storage project that they are were pursuing. And they presented to us here in the Town Hall, they also presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, the project essentially involves multiple shipping containers that have batteries inside of them, and when there's excess power in the grid, tho- those batteries store that power and backfeed it into the grid when demand exceeds supply. When uh demand exceeds supply. Um, the project went before the Connecticut Society Council because it. It based upon the amount of power involved was exempt from local zoning. And they received those approvals, I think in January. Um, so we had a meeting here, uh myself, Kara, Peter. I remember who else.
Paul, the guy from Key.
The guy from Key, uh to kind of go over where the project is. And um what the next steps are, and and the request that he made to us was that we consider um. A tax stabilization agreement. We don't have an ordinance in place um that would allow the town to enter into such agreement if we wanted to. But the, the key difference between this uh is that they're not asking for a tax abatement. Where they say, well, the project is valued at a hundred dollars and we only want to pay tax paid down to thirty. Um, the idea here would be, because like a, a solar project, it's an incredibly large investment upfront. And the, the value of the pro- the project is very high in the beginning. That they pay a lot of tax money upfront when they're just getting the project off the ground, and then it depreciates over time. And so rather than paying a lot and and having that kind of question mark as far as how much it will depreciate over how much time, what the project will be valued. They would like to enter into agreement with the town to take the same amount of money that they would pay over the terminate agreement. I think their agreement stays twenty years and basically spread it evenly. So they pay a little bit less upfront. And they take that um value and they defer it to um a later. Time in the agreement to make the project more stable. They believe that, and and they're, they're correct, that the, the statutes allow the town to enter into such agreement even without an ordinance, but. Um, the guidance that was provided to us by the um. Town Attorney is that we really need to have this agreement in place um for several reasons. Um, so the purpose of, of this discussion tonight is simply to roll this idea out to the Board of Selectmen and, and get feedback. If this is something that you think is worth considering, then the next step would be to put together an ordinance. That would provide a mechanism. If that ordinance were approved, then the town through the Board of Select would have to enter into an agreement. With this particular person. So we're not debating the merits of this project or what that agreement would be, percentages, cost, we don't even have that. But we need to be able to communicate to Key. Whether or not this is something the town is interested in having a conversation about. And. Kara is also here and far more educated in a lot of this stuff than I am, so if I'm incorrect, she will jump in.
Kara, do you have any?
Um, I, I don't have, I mean, they proposed a couple of things to us, um. I, I wouldn't, I, I don't know, I've been looking at some of their project, I wouldn't, um. While it is a, an upfront cost for them to install it, they also. Get a big investment of money selling, investing tax credits, which I don't know. So I, and in fact, they, they told one on another project in New York, and so um. Yeah, I, I don't, I haven't tried to uh put a value on this and. And part of it would be if they're gonna lease the land or if they're going to buy it. If they lease it, then we would um, we would send the owner uh the, the land a um. Incoming expense statement, they would declare with the leases and they would get taxed on that and how they pass that through.
Is, Mike, Mike, is this owned or leased?
Leased. I believe they said they were gonna lease it, but there's kind of two components. There's the, the real estate portion and then.
Right, the value, the portion on site, yeah. The concern with this is that while you're stabilizing this, you're not getting net present value of the money you're not getting.
Right.
And also that it, it presupposes that they're gonna be there for the next twenty years. They're not there for the next, in, in, in years sixteen, we're out that, that four years of money. There's no one to pay it.
I think part of that would be, would be built into the agreement. I, I can't imagine, because. You know, thinking about how that would play out, if you've got a twenty-five-year agreement with the town and you know you're gonna be out in twenty. You basically be able to, to kick back, back. Um, so I think these types of agreements are, I don't know that I would say common, but they do exist other towns, particularly in solar and. Projects of this type. Um, and one of the things that, that I, not being in this realm, understand is that. Because of the way these projects depreciate, you don't necessarily know what the value will be in five years. And so the town can understand exactly what the revenue is year after year because you've established it. These. Uh simplifying it in my head, it's almost more like a vehicle. You buy it for fifty thousand, you drive it off the lot. And it gets worth less and less. You don't necessarily know what that is. And so by establishing that, you understand what the tax revenue will be over the duration, I think. Rather than getting a lot upfront and then using that money and then over time, having to find other places to get that, that same number. The, the other thing I guess that they kind of touched on is that we're not obligated to take their word for it. We would go through a process where they would have to show us this information and we would understand what these values are.
I'm, I'm sorry. So Kara, how, how would you know what um? What, we audit them or something? I don't, I don't quite understand how.
Well, there's, I, I have, just think, think about this a little more. There's, I mean, there's two ways to do it is it. And we're not gonna be doing assessing them based on investment value, so it would be most likely a cost type of approach. Um, for, and the equipment, they did say that they're, they're, they would be replacing it every. You know, so many years, they have to keep their battery.
I understand.
Whatever, update. And um. I, I don't know how much, I, I think their developing cost that they gave us was like six million. Which is like lots, right, essential. So. That's the kind of, I don't remember the revenue off the chart in my head, but that's the level of investment, I believe they're making.
Ralph?
Yes, sir, I am here. Um, with respect to top municipal tax payments, I, I have heartburn over that. The concern I have is, a- and I, I've listened to everything that's been said and I understand why they're asking for it. But I, I think as far as our grand list is concerned, to see something on the grand list that has declining value over time, particularly when it's a sub. Relatively substantial uh contribution to the grand list. Uh, I, I, I have a problem with declining revenue. Over whatever period of time this is going to be. Secondly. If batteries get tired and wear out and have to be replaced, I would think that they're going to attempt. To keep the service that they provide at some level capacity. So its value. The individual component's value may decline, but the facility's value is going to stay the same or increase. A- and I, I'm just reluctant to. To welcome uh, uh, a, a new business into town. Uh particularly something of this nature. And right off the bat, offer them a um. A tax abatement, which. In essence, this is, it's stabilization, abatement, whatever you wanna call it. I understand they're structured somewhat differently, but nonetheless, it's less revenue for the town off the grand list. And uh, I, I want us to think carefully before we decide to do something uh to, with an ordinance. Or if we decide to agree to some kind of stabilization program. That's it, thank you.
Hey Ralph, I think we gotta be careful when we, when we uh call an uh stabilization and abatement this. Exactly the same thing. I think there may be slight differences there and. So that the income would, would remain the same over time, but I, I, I think that. I think the question before us tonight is whether we want to start to explore this or whether we wanna kill it in the cradle. So I, 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 and that's how I understand the question, is that, that, Mike?
Yeah, I, one other thing that I wanted to add in my discussion with Haller and Sage about this, and I, and. Um, he had some thoughts, but, but I don't have a definitive answer. I know that other towns have looked at this because. Solar and in a lot of these energy-type solutions, frequently. The state says, oh, by the way, like for example, manufacturing, you can't tax this, or they establish what you can and cannot do. There has been some thought that if there is an agreement in place and five years from now, the state says these now properties are exempt. Or these projects are exempt, you could build in um that protection. They, these guys, along with Brown Mount Solar, et cetera, have been hitting the state fairly hard in recent years to exempt all of that. So that they're, they do not, they do not pay tax. So the idea is if you've got this in place for twenty years, whatever happens at the state level. If you build that into the agreement, you go from, you know, you, you don't get, have, have that pulled out from under you. We, we don't have a confirmation on that, but it's something that we wanted to think about, cause that would be an, an important potential protection, if you will.
Stephanie?
Um, yeah, thank you. Steph Summers, uh Wyveron. I, I um. I just think, I, I, I think the main thing is, you know, we don't know what we're looking at yet or what exactly is being proposed, so there's. There may be, you could do a one-eighty on where you stand today on just hearing Mike's presentation so far, until you see the numbers and. How it works out. But I'm just gonna speak from um standpoint I see, which is. Uh, that we have a lot of indebtedness that we're gonna be incurring in, in the next few years. Uh, on the town's behalf to fix the schools and, and do other things and in our case. You know, having, having that streamlined or evened out, stabilized, if you will. Is maybe not, uh, not the way we wanna go based on our own indebtedness likelihood. That's all I would say. I would look at that factor.
Okay. Hang on just a minute.
And I would also question what would happen if they go bankrupt or, okay, the state decides. We don't have to pay taxes in general, we'll just hold up over here where we're still paying this twenty-year. You know, agreement.
Um, isn't this just about the ordinance itself, not the agreement? Or we've already jumped ahead. This is simply, do we want to have an ordinance that would allow us to do this? That's what I'm hearing, not whether or not we think it's a viable thing to do. Do we want, so the question is, do we wanna move forward with drafting an ordinance that would allow the town to do that? That seems to be a proactive stance to me. To create an ordinance, which doesn't mean you have, just cause it's an ordinance, I mean, you have to.
The timing implies though that you would, that you're doing it. The timing would imply to me.
Why is that? We, we create, we create.
Cause we're talking about doing it now in advance of this.
Well, we draft regulations in planning and zoning in anticipation of things that are to happen. Not necessarily meaning we're definitely gonna allow it to happen, but it gives us. The, the means to do so.
Well, I would use the example of the SDZ would have uh set us on a course. That would be more likely to allow than not to allow it. That popped up at a time. Uh, when there was definitely not public support for doing warehouse.
But the warehouse didn't pass because we had that, we had that ordinance.
We didn't, but you didn't pass the ordinance. The SDC was on the table, but that's what the public came out and spoke against.
I think, I think that's a little off topic, yeah, but what I think we are. Did I misunderstand Mike, or did he say? That um we could do this. Under the auspices of the state, we didn't have to have an ordinance in order to do this?
Yeah.
The app, the, the developer believes an ordinance is not required. The town attorney did not feel that was. He did not read that in the same way.
Unbelievably, John, lawyers disagree. I hope you're shocked as I am. Kara?
No, I, I think Mike mentioned if it were to go ahead without the ordinance, it would have to, the whole agreement would have to come before. Um, it's a town meeting.
I, I, I believe with or without the ordinance, it would have to come before town meeting, wouldn't it?
The ordinance would go to a town meeting.
Uh, but then the agreement would go to the town meeting as well? No?
Under the ord- under the ordinance.
It would go under the order?
If you, if the town adopted an ordinance, you would not need to bring each individual agreement to a, to a town meeting.
Oh, okay.
It would be under.
It would be under the Board of Selectment, right.
No.
Okay, um. So it seems to me that we have a couple of options here. One, we can table it. Two, we can uh look into what an ordinance might look in, look like, so that we have uh something further to discuss next time.
I was finding wheels. I, I have a table for now, bringing up for, for another discussion. Um, this is a faculty meeting. Um. I, I think it's something that we should consider and, and think about. Someone gets more information, you get, and get maybe an example for us to take a look at.
Okay.
What do you think?
Sure, all right, move the table and I'll second it and we'll move along.
Right, uh, yeah, right, right.
Say move the table.
Move the table.
Second, any objections?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're taking the table.
I just throw one more thing out.
Sure.
There are two other towns that they're doing the same thing, so if you happen to run across any of these.
Well, do you know what town so is, Kara?
East Hampton and Windsor, loves.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Public Works. And they discussed it. This is a fairly simple one. God, I hope it's a ten, this simple one.
Can I make another question? I have to leave in five minutes.
Oh, let's go to CIP plan and come back.
All right, did you have?
Do you, you need an introduction?
I don't know.
Go ahead, go.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen so you all can see it. I think that you have all seen the CIP plan in the past. How much, um. How much do you need to explain? Like, have you looked at the basements of it and thought about if there's different numbers?
Yes, yes.
Okay, um.
We need a summary of the.
I'll give you, I'll give you the, the good, I'll give you the good news. First, the good news is that. Um. Oh, a backup, a backup to what we're doing this current year. Right here, you see this local funds line? This is at a current fiscal year. We put four hundred and sixty thousand into the capital reserve fund. For local town projects. And then we also put a million dollars in for the school projects, and that's the, yeah.
So the school projects, that's, that's, we've agreed on that as a recurring, every year, we're going to spend a million dollars, one way or another. Um updating and upgrading our schools.
So we, we agreed to that in concept and we put it in every single year of the plan. But when we approve this plan, only what's in, in the very first year is binding.
I understand.
So, yeah.
And we did it last year as well, thanks.
Uh, well, the current year we're in now is the only year that we did it for, but that, that we started it.
So there was not a, a million dollars spent or supposedly spent?
Yeah, well, it's, it's in a, it's not.
At, at what's year one on there, she said current year. Where, where, we need to approve year one, which is the next.
Yeah, we need to approve this year, but it's really you're approving the whole plan and concept. But there's certain numbers in year one that correspond to numbers in your operating budget in multiple places. And those numbers um are what gets approved in the operating budget. But what got approved in this year's, that we're currently in, um, operating budget was to put the million dollars into the special savings account for the school building projects. And that million dollars is still sitting there.
Right. And was it set aside last year as well, or is this the first time?
This was the first time, or, yeah. So there's a million dollars there. The Board of Ed has come and asked for another. One point five million for this, for year one of this plan that we're talking about now.
So it's two point five million?
It, it would be, yes. And the reason why they've asked for two point five is because they want to tackle the roof. And the HVAC and the solar projects all in, um, kind of at the same time. And there's grants that they can get from the state and there's deadlines for that. So. On the one hand, they, they think they can mobilize pretty quickly and. Try to get the money to, to do this and they wanna get the grants on time. That would happen in this current, this, this fiscal year we're planning for right now. Um, July first, after July first is when they would need to be asking for these things and where we would have to have the money available. So if we don't put one, another, they, and they need two point five million. So if we don't put one point five in. To add to the one that's there now, they might not be able to do these projects because they won't have enough money to do them all. And um then they might miss out on grants.
Understood. However, I think. Um, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong, I've been looking at these numbers for a long time, you more familiar as well? Correct me if I'm wrong, I've been looking at these numbers for a while under my, even more than like as well, but at two point five million, don't we still fall short? I mean, the letter, the letter, the Maloney sent me a letter saying, sent to us a letter, um, saying, we're still short, we're still half a million dollars short. We we can't fund these projects, we won't have enough money.
Uh, I don't know what Rick sent you. I'm only going by what was sent to the C I P committee from the Board of Education. Rick might be talking about um, eligibility for grants, like if we missed, if we missed, like. What we were given last month was the the, and they have, they have prefaced everything with, it's all an estimate, they don't have actual costs. Um, they're hoping that they only need two point five million, um, but that would be after reimbursement, so, um. Right, so that's, so that's that, um. So, so what we did to 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 deal with that is we put one point five million in for year one for the schools. And only thirty one thousand to go into the capital reserve fund for local projects. Which Donna says is okay, we're we're, what happens with that capital reserve fund, it's like a savings account. We look at what's going on in the next five years, um, what we're gonna need to pay for out of that account, and make sure there's enough money in it. She thinks that, you know, if for this, if it's just one year and we do this, um. It's gonna be okay, because the next year, in year two, we would put a million, a little over a million dollars in there. And we would reduce what the board vets getting to five hundred thousand. So, um. So that's, that's the plan. Now, what what does this do overall? This, this is the part that is the. I I guess it's good news. Um, if you look down here, this is the big number, local spending total. Um, it's one point seven seven nine uh, million, which is the this current year's number. And that's, that's money that we're spending out of the operating budget, to pay up leases, to pay for things with cash. It's not things that we're paying for with grants, and that that would all be in this, this column, um. But, but, so, our goal is to try to increase that local spend number every year. That's been a goal of the C I P committee for the, for the last, I don't know. I've wanted to do it for years, um, I think we've actually been doing it like five years, or we've actually been bumping it up every year, um. More than inflation because we, we weren't saving up money, basically, and then we had to keep leasing things, so. Um, so if we want to stick to that seven percent increase in year one. Our spending uh, goal would be one point nine three. Um, we're at one point nine thirty eight, which is um, a little bit more than where we would wanna be, but it's. It's very close.
This is the seven percent, I'm sorry, this is seven percent increase?
Yeah, over, over last year, yeah.
What's, and what what about year two?
Year two, um, the the spend goal would be two point oh three six million. And this is where, you know, it starts to go off a little bit, um, to two point eight million, and. And the only way that we can. Uh, avoid that is if we were to move some things out, or if we were to bond some things. In a different way, um, or change the amounts that we're doing, but.
I think we should really be considering a a bonding approach, um, and people, we we will go to down the referendum. For the, for the schools.
Well, this is, this is a bonding approach.
Okay.
So, just, so just so you know, what what the plan is in year two is that we would bond a million do- um. Twelve million dollars to go to the schools. So this would be like the phase two of construction for the schools. If the roof and the HVAC is phase one. Phase two would start in uh, in year two as a bond.
Okay.
So we would bond twelve million, million dollars, that would come out to about a one million dollar a year. Bond payment, which gets us back to spending the million dollars a year.
It could be put in last year, and discussed and all that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and if we did need, if, let's say it came out to be one point one million dollars, we could use some of that money that's in reserve. And start, start using that to help offset the bond payment, which is exactly what the shock absorber plan was in the first place.
Yeah.
So, um, what, what I think Rick is advocating for is doing the bonding in year one. Not doing this two point five million thing, just going ahead and doing the bond for twelve million. The problem with that is that we don't know that twelve million, million is the right number. We don't know. Um, if they're gonna have enough time in the next few months to put together this whole comprehensive plan.
I heard Phil say that he he didn't want, maybe I maybe I misunderstood. I I watched him at the Board of Education meeting saying that he wouldn't, didn't think we could do this this year, wouldn't, wouldn't be able to apply for the grants by December.
Um, I I don't know.
It is not that he would, he needs to apply for the grants by December, and he needs that funding allocated before December to be able to apply to say grants. That's the the additional one point five this year. The projects themselves. Even all the funds are allocated, the funds, the projects themselves won't be able to be completed until next summer or the summer after.
Well.
But the funding needs to be out, it needs to be accounted.
You know, it's a lot of, and I do apply, and I do apply, right?
Correct.
Right, right, okay, so that's fine. I don't, I don't wanna see us go two more years. Before we start construction on on promised improvements to the school buildings.
Well, the physical, it, the physical practicalities of that, it can't happen sooner than that if you acted today. There are certain things like group projects that, well, first of all, they need to be summer projects by and large, because some of these projects are very invasive. And problematic with the schools, uh, with occupied buildings with students across the board. The only one is it takes time, that some of these projects. Evaluated, designed, permitted, contracted. It is realistically, it's probably your half to do your project.
Yeah, we're going for years here, so.
I, I can't speak to the past, all I can say is it's, the reality is looking now, if you mobilize on projects. Soon, you're probably looking at one to two years before you're able to initiate them in construction, so.
There's a distinction, though, between uh. When you bond and when, and and the appropriation, which means setting, setting the money aside with the intent to spend. And the actual spending, that the C I P plan can't know when all that's gonna happen, but you. You know, it makes sense to bond before you have, I mean, before you have this spending, so, so on a track.
Oh, that's, I'm sorry, I I have to get on a call for work and realize that, um, I, I have to go.
All right.
But, um, that, that's the, the, that's what, um, C I P has a prison plan to to you all. Um, all the other numbers in there that are in your operating budget, like the lease payments and, um. Some of the other transfers to other special funds, that's all corresponds perfectly with what you have submitted to the Board of Finance. So, so all of that is taken care of in there, um, for year one. Year, the the other years, we we don't have operating budgets for yet, but we have put those numbers in as we know them, so. Um, so, yeah, so I think the the big discussion will be, do we bond the full thing in year one? Or do we stick with the plan that was first presented to us, which would, you know, perhaps help them. Go fast on the the roof part, give them a little bit of time to figure out the rest of it, um. Not sure, but, but this is what we have right now.
I just wanted to clarify, and I think you guys know that the big thing they're waiting for in terms of the large amount of projects that you mentioned, Matt. Uh, is the update of the prior's report and the new cost with that, and that.
Next couple of weeks, right?
Uh, I'm hearing, I'm hearing soon, but I don't know, but that, that's, they don't even have the information now to. Figure out what to put in, so.
I believe Phil has a meeting with the design firm doing that this Friday, um, at which time he may have progress. Or an assumption of schedule, but yeah, the expectation is, uh, the board might be able to actually, by, um, call a special meeting to. Discuss that report before their next schedule. It's, your guess is as good as anyone's, eh?
Yeah, nobody knows.
Okay, so, thank you very much, Christine, I know you have to say.
I'm, yeah, I'm just gonna go in the other room and.
All right. Thank you. Okay, uh, so.
All right, before we move on, I actually still wanted to make a comment if you're going to move on.
All right, I I I was gonna have just a couple of words, but if you'll, if you can, if you can say, say what you're gonna say, because. I'm gonna be quick, and it's, it's not gonna probably be in.
Um, thank you, uh, yeah, James Marshall Fisher Hill Road, um, I just wanted to say, I I generally support this plan, um, for year one, I do. I won't beat it to death because I've said it at a number of meetings now, I do think, um. That shortchanging year one, um, only leads to further complications down the road, and further hardships of the town, and a bigger expenditure down the road. Um, I will note that this plan as presented really doesn't do much in year one to increase the budget. Um, and get ahead, we have thirty million dollars in capital room projects on that. On that spreadsheet, uh, over the next five years, and we're really thinking that for cap projects, the impact is like less than a hundred thousand dollars. To try to get ahead of those thirty million dollars worth of of expenditure. Um, it's, it's, I. We have to break the cycle of understanding that, um, we can continue to finance ourselves to death. So, I I would encourage this board, and like I said, for the finance to. Not sell the town short, um, in future years by cutting it short this year. The only other thing I'll note is that, um, if it helps. Uh, the Republican Town Committee, for example, uh, who seems to be adamant about cutting back all additional expenditures. Um, there is a hundred and ten thousand dollars allocated to this, to the fire departments in this year that may or may not be allocated. By the Board of Finance. There is two hundred thousand dollars in this coming year for the Emergency Services Building Committee. That a hundred and ten thousand that's existing is essentially, can essentially be washed and go back into the general fund to offset much of what was. Proposed for this coming year. It's just something the Board of Finance and this board should consider. Um, that one hundred and ten thousand going back would also allow for those funds to be allocated and directed by the Building Committee. Rather than the department individually, which I think would be advantageous to the town, and for representation, how the people are using, or how the town is using its resources. Um, and I'll stop there, so thank you.
Okay, so. Um. I, I think what I wanna talk about, uh, I'll, I'll cover that in in old business, I'm, I'm sorry. So let's move on to the uh, public works ten day, ten hour day discussion. Uh, traditionally, the uh, public works moves to four ten hour days during the summer. And five eight hour days during the winter, this is because we don't know when it's gonna snow, and so if you, if you've been. Have them working more days, and they're more likely to be working when it's snowing, and we're not paying overtime for snow plowing. Ten hour days allows them to get their equipment to and from the scene and spend more time on the project that they're on. Rather than shuttling equipment, it's, it's far more efficient for them. The, the reason this is up for. On, on the agenda at all is that. They've been looking at the weather reports and and they think that we're. They think we're done with snow, so they'd like to move, uh, the, to the ten day schedule, uh, three weeks earlier. So, I don't have a problem with it, but, so, what I'm looking for is. Is your input, and then I will allow the, uh, I will, I will inform the Public Works Director, unless you have a major objection. Do you think it's gonna snow? You have any problem?
No, makes sense, all right. They wanna use the daylight hours.
They wanna use the daylight hours, and they wanna, they wanna be transporting equipment, so.
I think you're wrong, I think it's gonna snow.
I thi- I think, I think that, uh, you shouldn't bring that upon us, and then you brought the bad juju, that's what I.
There was, there were snowflakes in in Stafford today.
No bad juju, too warm for.
Well, it's fifty degrees, it probably didn't last long. All right, so I will, I will talk to Public Works Director. Old business, and here's where we're gonna be here in a while. The Emergency, um, Services Facilities Building Committee. I've received a number of different pieces of of correspondence on this, over Bruce tonight. And these are all considerations that I have taken. Into consideration, and I also had long discussions with the fire departments. I would like to leave it as written, and I understand that that people would like to see more town participation. I understand that. I also understand that. The fire department, this is a fire department issue, when it comes to the. Um. Expertise we need and what they need, that's where I want the the input. I wanna make sure that the fire departments get. What fire departments need, not necessarily what they want, but what they need, and I believe that. As we learned with the School Building Committee, that indeed, the people of this town have a hundred percent say. In what gets done. If this committee cannot. Sell. I use that word advisedly, sell the plan to the town, it will not happen. I think we've seen that, that occur in in no uncertain case, so that if they don't. Stay within. The parameters of what this town needs and and will, and afford, it's not gonna happen, hundred percent, not gonna happen. So I would like to move that we form the committee. As written. Wait here a second.
Need to, can we, can we read it in?
Oh, wait, I have asked, I have, I have told people that they would have the opportunity to speak, so Mr. Martin.
Please, thank you. Um, yeah, well, seeing James Marshall Fisher Hill Road, um, you guys have, um, a letter before you that I heard today that. Um, I'm not gonna regret to say at any length, because it doesn't appear at home, um. This, I cannot say firmly enough, is the worst idea of a committee makeup that this board can entertain. There is no world in which, well, first I'd ask you to entertain the idea. Is it even legal or appropriate for members of an independent corporation to be able to vote on how the town can spend its money? No disrespect to the fire departments, they are independent organizations. Would they, would they, or would they not need to recuse themselves from any votes? That directed money to their organizations? I ask that as a question, I don't have the answer, that's your job.
They're not voting on any spending, they're voting on spending, they're voting on what we, they're, they're. Coming up with a plan on what we will spend on.
But the committee has the funds available in the C I P plan, correct? So would they not be putting forth a recommendation as to how to vote, how how the funds are then spent?
How the, how the funds are used for planning?
Well, that's a question, that, is, is they have verified?
Okay, if I try to help answer that question?
Sure, please.
Um, I think that's a very good question, and this type of topic has been addressed. Even up through the town attorney before, when I joined the Board of Finance six and a half years ago. Um, because I was a member of the Wellington Hill Fire Department. And, um, the state ethics laws specify a couple of things. One is, as you said, they accept four funds that are allocated to the committee itself. Um, for committee functions, this committee is not making a decision to provide funding to either of the organizations. That those members come from. So where the ethics law is really key in is, does the voting member of a committee have a. They call it pecuniary interest. In other words, can they make a vote that benefits them financially? Or in other ways, like with power? Um, and so that's what the, that's what has to be avoided in this situation. Um, if the committee is only authorized to make decisions on spending the money provided for the committee. For administrative things like perhaps hiring a consultant, or paying for a recording secretary, things like that. Then the members of the departments are not voting to provide themselves with any benefit. Where it comes into effect is if the committee could make a decision, like on the Board of Finance, we have the power to make a decision. To provide money to an organization that some of the people might have a vested financial or stature. Power interest in. That's where it had to be carefully managed, and particularly if the people were paid. By those organizations. Now they have a dual financial interest because they could make a decision that provides money to the organization that pays their paycheck. Um, so, excellent question. I think as far as what we see here, it avoids that situation, um, but that should be a consideration.
And it's also something, is that something that you want this committee to start with that question hanging over the head? Similar to many of the conversations that were had at the School Building Committee, with people accused of background dealing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. The importance here is that you're setting this up. You need to set this up in a way that it maintains a trust with the public, that you, as a first lady and the chief executive of this town. Are advocating for that and not by your close experience with fire departments. Whatever that may.
Then you, I'm I'm sorry, can you say that? Once again, I I didn't absorb it.
You as the first, you as the first selectman and as this board, you guys represented the town first and foremost. It becomes very challenging when you need to have a degree of neutrality. In the discussions and any votes that happen with this board. And you you need to set this off so that the public trusts what's gonna happen. Otherwise, and I want it as much as you guys, I want these fire departments to have a successful adventure. I want something that to happen that is a good balance between what the town actually needs. For their emergency services and what the departments want. Ultimately, it's probably gonna be something that nobody likes, which is likely gonna mean it's a good compromise. But setting this up so that it's just the fire departments with. Quite frankly, more representatives on this committee via voting and non-voting members than public members of the town at large. Is it is it is simply a gigantic mistake. I can't speak firmly enough about it. These projects are not gonna go anywhere. And you're right, the town will have their vote. And they they'll vote them down because there's no trust in this committee. There may not be any trust in this committee. It needs to be done up board. It can't be done with a rollout by the first selectman in the middle of a meeting. Uh, once with one version of this document and then again. There hadn't been a single person here that's voted in favor of this makeup, but it's spoken in favor of this committee as we suggested. And it seems to be being completely ignored. So I would urge you to reconsider as you do this.
I I would only, I would only disagree that this was just rolled out of this meeting. This was rolled out. And then it was overhauled considerably. I I believe it was. Not 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 to the extent that that you may may.
You still have six fire department members and two members of the community. Nothing has changed. You've added a board of selectmen and a board of finance representatives. That's all you've done.
Are are you are you done?
I am done now.
Uh, I would just uh say one thing. It reminds me a little bit of what happened with the ARPA Commission when we had a lot of department heads in the town. Some of whom were were members of the town and some of whom were not. Who were voting on their, who were set up to pitch and and vote on their own bonuses. Ultimately, we ended up going to town meeting after there was some concern about that. Um, to to have that come up before town meeting. It delayed the process. But that was the right thing to do and it did pass in town meeting. But I think the point that I think. The point that Jim's making and the thing that I that I feel is that we're losing an opportunity to educate the public about the issues. Of what we're talking about here and why we need what we need. If they're not, if they're, not many of them are gonna be at the table. In the School Building Committee, we really didn't have insiders. We had um we had people uh from the community. We advertised. They, it was advertised, so we got an array of folks with different talents and it was a real uh smart, effective group. Uh evaluating this big issue about whether to build a new school or not. And it was a three-year process. So you know, it's also that commitment. I just feel like. The town, I feel like there's still gonna be like, is it is it two public members that are not as. Well, not a selectman and not a board of finance. It's just, I'm calling it regular pub- public, you know.
I know, I know.
I know, I know what you're saying. I I I know that they're all great members of the town and committed members. But they're also the ones that have been talking about this for years and and they already know all the issues and they're gonna be. You know, pushing their viewpoint on the issues and that's great. But the people who are missing to me are all the folks who. Don't even know what what's uh going on here yet and that that the public at large needs to be educated. And brought along with this process is all I'm saying. And I don't see that. I don't see a communication engine for that.
I was, I was seriously hoping this committee would be the communicator.
Well, if you have ten people.
They would come up with a plan and they would, they would communicate that to the community. Because if they don't, they're not gonna, they're not gonna pass this. Anywhere. You 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 called, you you asked at the beginning, didn't you, Ralph?
Yes.
I did, I did. I hope you're gonna hear me okay. Uh, Ralph Tulis, forty seven, Billsville Road. All all I really wanted to comment on is that I did throw my hat in the ring. To sit on this committee. Uh, hopefully I can contribute um. In the areas that I have expertise. And I am capable of listening to people who have more expertise than I do. So I think I can give it a a fair shake as far as uh trying to work the details out. That this committee will be charged with. So I just wanted to make sure you got my email and. I have not withdrawn my name from getting involved in this. I just want to make that clear. Is that good?
Yes, uh Shannon, Shannon has a has a. Has indicated that she did receive your email. John?
Um, something came up here that I think we need to take into account. Once this committee has made its recommendations. They brought up the ARPA Committee, which was uh made up mostly of people. In the government who recommended giving themselves bonuses, but it still had to go to town meeting. And when it went to town meeting, of course, the people who were gonna get these bonuses packed that meeting because they were getting something out of it. And the people who weren't involved didn't bother to go to the meeting. So the meeting passed. So uh I would really feel better myself if. We have more non. Fire Department members to balance off those because people in the Fire Department know what they need. Uh, but it can go a little, little overboard, I think.
All right, Pete Latentus.
Good evening, Peter Latentus.
I'm gonna be able to say your name properly by by the end of my.
That's that's a smug. I just want to express my support for what I think Bruce said earlier, what Jim is saying tonight, John just said, and Stephanie as well. I I I think there's a strong need for public trust. Uh, I think you both understand that. What I think would be beneficial is if we could hear a discussion amongst the three of you as far. An executive body on how you see the composition of the committee, do you think that will work? Um, and and then a very transparent process to provide townspeople. As well as public officials potentially to serve by it. Thank you.
Mike?
I hear, I recognize a lot of important things in the concerns we're hearing. I think a couple of things I'd like to sort of offer another viewpoint or countering viewpoint on is. Part of the difference with the ARPA Commission was they were empowered to make the decisions upon the spending of the public money. So they they had a right decreed to them. Um, to make a decision which in those cases that were brought up. Would benefit the people potentially on the group. And there was a lot of discussion about who should recuse from votes and all that, but essentially, the group had the power to. Navigate a pecuniary interest of the members of the group. So that's a difference there. And and they had the power to do most of that without town meeting. They could have done the bonuses without town meeting. It was prudently decided this was too hot a topic and was moved to a town. And and as John said, the people with the most interest came to the town meeting. If you look at our town meeting history, you will find one hundred percent. Matching statistics. The people with the interest in the topic, positive or negative, will be the ones who come. And um the same thing is related in what happened with the School Building Committee. School Building Committee had a lot of members. It had voices from many different parts of the town and industry. Still the same potential pitfalls could or did happen that could happen with this committee. It was not the number of people on the committee or who they represented. It was the fact that the public's viewpoint and the public's appetite for spending. Did not get addressed by the committee. So whether this committee we're talking about has six or a hundred people on it. It will still be a matter of if the public gets their input into the committee or not. And that will decide if the committee puts forth a proposal that succeeds. I I'm not saying more public input or more public voting members is a bad idea. I'm just saying, I'm not sure it solves the problem. The problem is getting the public to attend the meetings, to come to the Zooms, to show up at the meetings. And and I think that is where we find the value of the public's input on things. And we need to not be conversant, we need to be nimble. We're almost a year into Wellington One's Firehouse having issues that need to be addressed and we need to get moving. Not not railroad through a plan. I don't want to sound like that, but we need to get moving and get the public in the discussion and start figuring out what needs to happen to solve these problems. And get them in front of people to vote on them because otherwise it's gonna be the second year that Wellington One's Firehouse is not usable. Before we have a plan put together.
All right, Jim, can you hang on just a minute? I I I think I've given you an unfair amount of time. If you have something very short, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to uh note that, you know, whether or not there's. The, I agree with you. It's important for the Fire Department to have a strong voice. Both Fire Departments have the strongest voice in the world about. Informing the town about emergency services operations and needs. Doesn't mean any type of voting voice. They should be in advisory capacity. First and foremost, and it shouldn't get lost in this discussion. So, thank you.
Okay, so. I I would love to have a discussion. I don't know how Wellington Hill feels about this, but if we moved uh. My personal feeling is the bigger committee is, the slower it moves. Just like every other body on the planning. So rather than adding additional townspeople, what I would like to do is move the. Change, make a change so that instead of two and one from each department, we have one and one from each department. I think that 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 kind of solves that. One regular voting member, one alternate if if.
Andy, what do you, Andy, what do you think about that?
Oh, I feel a little bit of a deficit because I haven't read the latest plan, but. My uh my recollection of it, I guess maybe in my naivety, I thought this was more of a. Committee to really establish a needs analysis, not necessarily actually decide on boom, we're done, we're spending the money and that's.
Yeah, I really felt that this was a building committee to say what is needed. Right.
What is the best way to move forward to provide the highest level of emergency services available to the town? That's the way I saw this. Not that this is it, we're gonna spend money. That's my naivety.
Efficiently and efficiently and um, you know, within budget, but yeah, I I agree.
Well, right, right. We know we.
So I I think um, you know, Pete, I think what you're saying here, correct me if I'm wrong, is okay, we'll scale back one on the uh on on these departments. All right, I I I agree with that. I think that's a, that's a good, that's a good thing. By the way, this is where things are supposed to work, it's supposed to compromise.
So that's, that's one.
Just for my notes, does that mean taking one off from each department and then to public?
No, no, no. Take it down to eight. I want a small, small committee and and I know Jim's gonna disagree with me and make dark comments back there in the corner. But that's fine. Mike, you had something to say?
I have, we're having a discussion up here for now.
Go ahead, yeah.
So the other thing, uh Jim Marshall's thing, I think I I do like one of the things that he wrote in here, which is really good. Which was to have that committee report back to this board of selection monthly or or whatever periodically. That's one thing about the. I, maybe I, maybe I missed it, Mike, but if this S B C had talked to the Board of Selectmen more and and people saw that. Maybe that's the communication they were looking for in terms of, you know, knowing what's going on, knowing, knowing the status, knowing what, you know, what the progress is and stuff like that. I'd like, I, he has, he has this as six.
Can I just insert that was done? There was a rep on the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. And it was discussed at every Board of Selectmen meeting every two weeks.
Thanks. Okay, sorry, I made a mistake, but maybe we could have the the chairman come to, the chairman of this committee come to the Board of Selectmen and and. Give her, give her a summary instead of having just a, I don't, whatever.
No, that makes sense. Shannon, take a note. Shannon's gonna show it.
The way it's written, you guys will have someone on the board to report back.
Yes, but I I I think that it's also important that somebody from the committee come.
Yeah.
Somebody else from the committee come here and.
Right.
And and confirm and and. Fill in the the parts that may have been missed.
Right, so um, and then um. Well. And then I, you guys have a discussion once in.
I do. To uh persuade some of John's. Concerns. I I would also like to add that any any uh decision. To go move forward with the plan, go to referendum rather than town meeting. Does that help you, Andy, John?
As long as we can at least speak to the issue at the town meeting. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, then you you what, you have a, you have a town meeting to send it to referendum and at that town meeting you can speak to. Whatever you want to and then it'll go to referendum. We'll have a full day of voting.
Usually, yeah. I thi- I think we did the, we kind of skipped the public hearing and kind of previous issues, so.
Mike, Mike.
I think you create a technical problem there, Pete. I think if you make a rule that all the decisions have to go to referendum. You you create a technical problem because first of all, the townspeople have a right to make a decision at a town meeting. So if you're gonna make a rule that has all go to referendum after the town meeting, you have to be careful of that, one. Number two. You would have to very carefully define which decisions.
Okay.
Because some people are gonna interpret it if they decide to vote to adjourn the meeting. That has to go to referendum. I realize that's a crazy example, but you're gonna have someone in town who's gonna say, that's what you said. Right? So you're gonna have to define it, which is another delay in figuring this out. We're again adding bureaucracy. Instead of getting.
I would draw that. Take, take the note back out, Shannon, referendum and.
Some things need, some things have.
That referendum, to be honest with you.
Okay, you you've already pulled me off on that.
The Board of Finance rules will already set some of your rules. That some things have to go to town meeting and then even potentially to referendum.
The other thing I want to add to this is that uh I would like to. Open the positions that are available up to town people. We will advertise on. Um, the town website and social media if we can, looking for volunteers for this committee so we get the best volunteers we can find.
I'll throw my hat in right now.
Okay, send an email to Shannon.
I don't need them.
Oh, tell Shannon at the end of the meeting so she has your information and we will, we will look it over. All right?
Even though I was a Wellington One fire member.
Yep.
I am a Wellington Hill fire member, but not active.
All right, well, we we will. We have a limited number of positions, but thank you for for that, Dave. Uh, so.
Pete, you asked if Wellington Hill would have an opinion on that change?
Yeah.
I think you're asking a lot. When you get down to two representatives total of the two fire departments, you're asking a lot of technical input and work.
Right.
Boisted on two people. Because the fire departments are the ones that are providing all of the technical knowledge base that feeds into the discussion. You're you're giving them a lot of work.
Yes, I understand that, but I would also hope that the two members of those departments would bring in the members that they need to advise their committee. I don't think they have to work in a vacuum. I think that they can bring in people to to ask you to.
Well, it's four of the eight, right? Would be, it's two from each fire department. It's just that one's an alternate.
The the fire department's gonna have plenty of place.
I mean, it's two.
I know it's surprising. I don't agree with you. I don't agree.
This is gonna become eventually a public committee to maybe get input from the Fire Department if we keep going this way.
I I was, I'm hoping that the Fire Department, that the committee. Would look to the Fire Departments for for more input than other than voting members. That's all I'm saying. I I don't know if that's the way it'll work or not, but I that's, God, that's my hope.
Maybe we, we summarize, I think there's a little bit of question here. Can we summarize exactly what the makeup of that were, that were concerned on the table of the committee?
Makeup currently on the table as I I see it. Member from the Board of Selectmen, member from the Board of Finance, two members of the community. One member, the voting member from Wellington Hill, one non-voting member from Wellington Hill, one voting member from Wellington One. One non-voting member from Wellington One and those voting, those non-voting members are alternate, so if their voting member is not there, they may vote.
That's my understanding as well. Is that clear? Yeah, I got it. I got it.
Then I would, since we had no time to plan this conversation, I am going to. Take a stab at this response from the Wellington Hill Fire Department. We would ask that the selection of the remaining members who are not fire department members is carefully done to make sure that it's not going to be. Uh, that it's going to be collaborative. Because if the fire departments end up with saboteurs that they're facing, or everyone on the committee says. We don't wanna raise taxes, we don't care what you want for a project, it's gonna go nowhere and the fire department's gonna have to back up and have their own committees. They're gonna have to set up their own committee to bring a proposal to the board of selectmen to see if you like it, and then the board of finance end will end up defeating the entire purpose of this.
And this is a part of my issue with very large committees. All right. So. I've run out of my, uh, thoughts on this, how do you feel about the as amended?
As amended, I like it, I understand that there's, you know, the compromise is difficult for everyone, it's difficult for people who wanna have every person on there be. Be a, a.
A town member.
A town member and no fire department representative at all, it's just advise us on it. And on the other side, it's like, well, we want more than half the people to be to be firemen, I I understand that too. I think this is a good compromise, I think it works, um, so.
I know, all we wanted was half.
I I understand.
Not more than half.
I, I, when Pete first presented to me, before it went into print, so I understand, I get it, um, you know. I think it's okay, that's all, so, um. Uh, Andy, you have a, you have a.
I mean, I'm hearing everybody's concerns, it seems like the biggest concern is that the two members of the community is not enough, that's all I'm, that's really what I'm hearing. Um, I don't, I'm, I'm not convinced that a. That a larger, a larger committee doesn't always mean it's slow, I don't think that's necessarily the case, um. I don't know, I think the, the, the original makeup of what was it, three, two members of each fire department, actually three representatives, but but one non-voting. Um, that doesn't, that doesn't seem excessive to me, um. You've got a wide variety, the fire department has very specific rounds of knowledge.
Right.
And just because you're all in the same room and you might, you know, have, wear the same uniform, doesn't mean you know exactly what that, what we're talking about. A build, see, I think this is a building as far as I'm concerned, not a, not necessarily, it might be a culture change, but we're only talking about. A building.
Right.
And that would seem to be more technical to me than the host, but I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But so. Um, I don't really see anything wrong with the original makeup, except maybe adding more. Non, adding more just residents.
Right.
To, to here and and. Um, I think it's.
So we have, so we. Can I summarize? Home participation, but you have firefighters back on and add two more citizens?
No, but if we're, if we're taking the, the way I'm, I'm, I'm completely, I don't even live in town. But, um, what, what makes sense to me, if you're gonna take one firefighter. Fire department member from each side. Add, keep it at ten and just add two more members of the public.
That's a number that possibly.
Like.
That, that, I think that's what Andy just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, that's what I'm getting from it, if you take. Somebody from Wellington One and Wellington Hill and replace those with members of the public.
Even if we keep them and then add ten.
Right, I mean, if it's a ten-person committee, is twelve, is a twelve-person committee gonna make a conversation?
It's really not.
I'm not convinced that's.
Okay, let's add, let's add those firefighters back in and add two more.
I don't know.
I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't. That, that way I can piss off both Jim and Mike.
Well, there you go, and that's a word.
As long as they're Wellington residents.
Well, Mike, what do you, what do you think about that?
I honestly don't even know anymore.
Okay.
I just, I wanna get us, so we can get started and start figuring out, do the needs assessment. And start getting, hopefully, the public comes to the meetings.
Yes.
And start figuring out what we need and start driving toward the plan, because we need time.
Yeah.
We need time to do that, so we can come back and and say, this is what we think is what we need, this is what we think it's gonna cost.
Yep.
This is gonna take a long time. So, we gotta get moving.
This is an emergency facilities plan.
Yes.
And that's all the vote is, it's not anything, there's no mention of dollars here, it is a plan, maybe the plan comes in at fifteen million or. Twenty million or eight million, we don't know that, to develop a plan. Doesn't, it doesn't seem to matter to me how many people are on it, as long as we can move forward. And come up with a plan that makes sense for the town, so do it, let's.
You, go ahead.
Don't you have a motion already? You have a motion?
We have a motion, we, we've been amending it. We've been amended, the motion is to accept the plan as, as presented, and we've been amending it.
So withdraw that one, right?
Withdraw.
The original motion?
Original motion.
I withdraw the original motion.
All right, now we need, now we need a motion on what, what we're, what we're considering, right? Which would be, uh, amending the, um. I, I need, I need to actually look at it.
Committee makeup.
So.
Amending the committee makeup to be, uh, by adding. Two more. Um, at large members of the public, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that's it.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and also. In, in, uh, adding to the charge that they report back to, uh, the board, uh, board of selectmen, uh, monthly.
Yeah. And that, that we will be, uh, advertising for community members.
Last time in charge, okay, yes.
That's, that's it. We will be, we will be looking for. For townspeople to. Be on the committee.
I hate to suggest something else, should you establish a start date? Does, are you gonna advertise for community members for the next two months?
No.
Because I'm gonna have like a committee meeting.
Right, no, no, I, I, I fully understand that, my, my thought was for one week, but. I, I'm thinking maybe two now, given the discussion in the room tonight.
Two more weeks.
Give it two more weeks, we'll, we'll break it, we'll, we'll look at, at the resumes at the next board of selectmen meeting. That's two weeks from today.
Four hundred and thirty snow.
Four hundred and thirty snows, would you show him about the snow?
All right, okay, so, I need to be honest, we have, we have, we have a motion on the floor. We, we amended the motion, I think everyone understands what was.
We, we have a second, right?
Yeah. Well, I'll second that, um, I would like to add, though, let's, if, uh, if we put a start date on it. Public, public participation can be a challenge, I would say even if you don't get any applicants. That want to be part of this, and there may not be any, when, if you want it, you wanna have, you have openings for four now. Non-fire departments, just residents, not affiliated members. If you don't get four, I don't think we should delay.
No.
We should now, because it, it is up to the public to be involved.
Right.
That, there, there is an onus on the public to participate.
Yes.
In town events and town issues and everything, if you don't get them, well. Doesn't mean business stops.
Okay, so. I gotta, we've had an extensive discussion, we've got a motion to amend. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. Thank gosh, now we can move on to.
So two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, we will appoint members. And what do we, the committee can start immediately following that.
Did you just clarify what the fire department representatives are, is it two?
Two.
That's the alternate.
Well, maybe one alternate, head for each, so six total.
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's not voting?
We were just wondering, so.
Understanding.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so we're encouraging, uh, uh, town residents who aren't affiliated with the fire departments to, uh, forward. Our recommendation, our, our interest, uh, to Pete, right?
New Shannon.
Yeah.
With my own, with a keen interest in certain things.
Right.
Not required, right, like capital or destruction or something.
Long, long service in the town, um, other boards, all that sort of thing, so. Okay, and then we're gonna have one from board finance and one from board selecting, Andy, I think that, is that you, Andy?
But that would have been determined, I'd like to turn it, yeah, I mean, until, I mean, that.
Oh. Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, nothing's gonna happen for two weeks. Or maybe the two weeks after that, all right.
Next, next on the agenda, Pete.
My, my. No. Uh, next thing on, on the, uh, agenda is the stage removal in the common room. Last time I brought this up, it was suggested that there may be asbestos. It turns out there's been restudies of this building or asbestos, and none of the studies have found asbestos. So we will be moving forward as if there's no asbestos.
Two weeks.
Not in two weeks.
That is so bad.
On, on April third. On April third, we'll be moving forward because they have early voting. Uh. Through the, April, April second is the actual PPP. Presidential preference primary. And so that will be happening on April second, so on April third, Troy and his, and his crew will be looking at that state. They, they wanna do some test boards first to make sure there's nothing critical under heated before they tear it out.
Or creepy crap.
And allowing it to be torn out will then allow us to build storage for the registrars. Who are getting, uh, hammered by the state this early voting. They're gonna need a lot of storage.
What's next on the agenda, Pete?
Next on the agenda is, uh, a budget discussion, so. I met with, uh, Donna today about what are the budget, uh, movers. Number one, in the, I, I'm not speaking to the education budget because I. Don't have any sway over the education budget. It's not in my wheelhouse or approved or something like that. Let's use all kinds of words, it may or may not make sense, number one is public works. There are, the public works budget is up two hundred and seven thousand dollars, and out of that is a, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for asphalt. Over, what they've done is they've taken their crack ceiling, their chip ceiling and their asphalt budget. Combined it into one budget and then added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The reason for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars before John has a stroke, could I see it setting in between his eyes, is that. Uh, last year, the, the town spent, I believe, this is. What I've been told, and, and if I'm wrong, I, I apologize and I hope that someone will correct it. The town spent forty thousand dollars on a pavement assessment. And the pavement assessment said you're not doing enough paving. And so Troy has upped his budget to come. Close to the amount of paving we should be doing every year to maintain our roads at, at a level where they're. We're fixing them at least as fast as they're deteriorating. So that's why that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is in there. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I think, um, given the situation that we're in, um, with the board of education budget, I think we have to look at these things holistically. The entire town and the impact on tax rates. Um, I would love to be able to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on new roads, a brand new asphalt on our roads, I mean. And. Do not want to. Not, not keep taxes at a reasonable level, I mean, there are people in our town that have problems making their tax bills, and they're not long old people. They're people that don't have a lot of money, um, so. You know, I'm in favor of decreasing that, I think we can do half that and, and save seventy five thousand dollars and not. So the, the increase for asphalt only would be seventy five thousand instead of a hundred and fifty thousand. That would be done in the board of finance, I guess, right?
Yes, that would be better than the board of finance.
What's it in for now, this year?
Pardon me?
What's the paving budget this year?
I don't have that number on my, my, right here, it. I do remember looking at it.
We can see it, it's just.
Yeah, I, 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 I know that it's on that line, they, they combined three lines that have already appeared at the board of finance. Um.
I have other things.
Public works?
No, not in the.
Okay, let's go to the next one, and then we will go to each one there.
Sure.
CIP, it's up a hundred and fifty nine thousand, five hundred and twenty nine dollars. Uh. This is for projects in school security and, uh. I have something else here, I can't read them right, so that's where that's coming from. The thing with CIP is it was originally scheduled to go up four and a half percent. CIP, uh, went to ten percent. Uh, I requested that it go to seven and a half percent. The, uh, CIP decided that the savings wasn't enough, so now it's currently back up to nine percent. The, as Jim pointed out, our savings line is down.
Yeah.
Part of that reason, reason it's down is because in year two, they're looking to, they've moved five hundred thousand from. Year two into year one, and then they took out something there so they can move it back to year. Two, but that's. I, I think that, that Jim's got a valid, uh, point that we're not putting enough into savings. But on the other hand, the town is limited in how much they can raise taxes, with some exceptions. You know, but we, but the state is, wants us to, no more than six point two five percent raising taxes.
Two seven, but it's.
Two seven.
But it's exclusive of all capital spending and exclusive of all special ed spending, which are the two major driver.
Right, but and then special ed, at the last board finance, they're adding two hundred and.
Well, there's about two hundred and fifty thousand more.
Yeah.
Uh, in addition to what we're spending otherwise in special education, because seven, seven transfer out students. Versus five.
And it's gonna sound a little flip, put a quarter million here, a quarter million there.
Pretty soon, you're getting your own money, yeah.
The last thing is the, um, well, just a couple of things. Uh. The assessor contract. For which there's currently some confusion, which I, we discussed at the beginning here, and I hope to get straightened out as soon as possible with the town of Bolton. Uh, they're looking for a thirty one percent increase in our share of the assessor. Next year, and each, according to Donna, it should be three percent. And that's a significant change, also where the training's coming from, we do have training dollars in there because our assistant assessor. Is, is needs them basic training, train her up to speed, uh. Really like to see her become an assessor. You know, I'd like to train them up. That's, that's my goal, to, to train up our, our town employees so that they can excel.
But you said that thirty one percent increase also includes training for the, the assessor, yeah.
But I believe we're also paying, we're paying double for that someplace in the budget, and I wanna get that straightened out, so we're not doing that. We're, we're not paying double, we're budgeting double, we're paying single, I wanna make sure that, that the budget reflects reality. Got it. Uh, and the last thing is the coordinator for the senior center, that was, uh. A, a large discussion at the board of finance, uh, that was originally supposed to be a seventeen thousand dollars a year job. Uh, stepped down to. Half, and then the town taking on the. Uh, salary. It turns out that instead of seventeen, it's thirty one.
Thirty two.
Thirty two, thirty one or thirty two thousand, and for budgeting reasons, uh. ARPA is looking to take some excess, not excess, ARPA funding. That may not have been used on other projects to turn it back over towards the, uh. Salary of, of that position, at least until the ARPA money runs out, so that we recover that, I think that the seniors made a. Uh. Persuasive argument for why they need that position, there's, uh, but that's for the CIA, for, uh. Board of Finance to wrestle with. I, I don't think that's our purview, I think that, that it's a, it's a valuable position for seniors.
My understanding is that we take it down about, to about, uh. Uh, twenty eight, is that right?
One to twenty eight or something.
Or, no, I'm sorry, more like eighteen, there's about fourteen thousand in ARPA money to apply.
All right.
That's from two years, though, so, you know, if you wanted, if you requested, for instance, that. This fiscal year and the one we're budgeting, we love together that our, our remainder, we could put that all toward twenty, twenty.
I think, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna wait for. Well, wait for guidance from ARPA and from the, uh, business office before I make a motion on that, I think that will be prudent. Okay. So. We've had plenty of speaking, however, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have comments on budget.
Go ahead, comment on budget, I'm sorry, I didn't need to cut you off.
I don't know if it's the right place to do it, but so I wanted to do the seventy five thousand dollar cut in the asphalt. Um we'd like to do it, but as I indicated earlier. You know, this is a very difficult year. Um we got something, it may not be a great time. The other thing is, in the board of education budget, we have um. Board of Education Special Education Position, apparently, that's been added that wasn't in Phil's original plan. And I would be in favor of cutting that and uh and then uh also there's a. In the board of education budget, there's um a reserve account or a or a surplus account or some kind of account. If Phil wants to use to build up money, apparently. I'm not familiar with anything like that, but. And that the video I was watching, I think he said he wanted to have a line in there for contingencies. And.
That's the non non-lotting fund.
No, it's different from non-lotting.
Join the board, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead.
We don't believe the board of that budget is in any way of the purview of the board of selectmen. Is that?
I believe that's true as well.
That is from the board of ed to the board of finance to the people.
Yes.
Right? I guess, seeing as I um that was the la- end of my list.
Okay, hi.
I'm done.
We're glad.
Welcome back.
We're pretty close. The last thing is that uh I made an error in the last, at the last board of selectmen meeting. And then I made a motion that we. Uh approved the uh approved the budget as presented to the board of finance, because we hadn't had a chance to do that before it was presented with board of finance. It was seconded, it was discussed, but I failed to ask for a vote. So uh would you like to hear this motion again? Sure. I move that we uh I I adopt the budget as presented uh to the board of uh finance. That was all it said. Yes.
Could you say what percentage increase it is? Cause I've seen four different versions.
Uh my. I would love to say that.
It's the version you have.
It's it's the last version. I I.
Because after the board of finance, uh it went up again, I think.
It very, it went up.
What are you at now?
It it was that seven and a half to nine percent, I believe, on the on the CIP and which is not significant bump. And then uh there was four hundred dollars, I believe, added for. One hundred dollars for human services and three hundred dollars for something else.
I have a story, so I'm feeling a little bit of a deficit.
I yeah, I'm 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 blanking on it, so I'm throwing my.
There's a deficit, so.
I just wondered if you you knew where you and if you if your percentage increased year over year, if you can.
Uh our percentage did increase year over year, and it was significant. It was seven point eight, I believe.
I don't have a good thing.
Yeah, the thing is that our seven point eight is of a smaller figure and they the. Uh general government budget is smaller than. The education budget, so even though our percentage is higher, our our actual dollar amount is lower.
You love talking.
Yeah.
Okay.
The joke. Got it.
Pretty good.
Alright, so. Let me amend that.
Well, also, are you approving that with the recommended cuts tonight or not?
I am not recommending. I I I'm 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 giving it as presented, not as recommended. How's that? Is that? Does that clear it? Does that clear your question? I don't know if it clears the the error anymore. Does it clear your question?
Why are you looking at me to make a motion?
I'm looking for a second.
Uh I might also. Our discussion hurts, so.
Alright.
This is what happened last time.
This is what happened last time, and then we discussed it, and I forgot to say, all in favor, say aye. Do you have any more discussion?
No, I don't.
Do you have any more discussion?
I don't.
Well, then let me not forget again this time. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
No one would abstain.
All those have abstained.
I abstained.
There we go.
What's next on your agenda?
Um president to speak. Anybody have anything else to say? Have I talked you out yet? Did I see a hand raised?
Jen Goodell.
Ladies first.
Jen Goodell. I'm sorry, I didn't look up.
Hi, thank you very much. Um I just wanted to express my concern. Surprisingly, not about any of the topics that you guys discussed tonight, but um there's a fundamental difference. In how you guys are conducting board meetings, and I just wanted to register my concern about that. Um my understanding is that you guys are the board of selectmen doing business in public, but not with the public. Um I I it seems very cumbersome and unwieldy for you guys to be having these conversations with folks. Sitting in the room. I apologize to those sitting in the room, however. Um I'm, I just don't understand the rationale for for how these things are are being done. You guys are. Supposed to be debating these things and talking amongst yourselves. There's two present to speaks that people have the opportunity to share their thoughts about. And this back and forth throughout the entire meeting is, and it's leaking into other meetings as well, into other committees, and then work is getting. Again, cumbersome and unwieldy, and there's not a lot of appetite for three-hour meetings because there's back and forth for two hours of it. Um, okay, that's, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. And uh. I I know you you just said you did more back and forth, but I'm gonna back and forth with you. Uh I I uh. I I I just have doubts about my own ability to have all the information. And so I, that's why I asked for the back and forth, so I can. I can gather the other information. I can I can draw from the community. Uh John, uh Pete, did you have something?
Ladies first, I think Stephanie was before me.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
She didn't, she didn't have her, she was pointing out, okay. Go ahead. I think you're next up.
Oh, thank you. Um Peter Voltajic, ninety seven, Trask Row.
The Kinchich. Um is that, am I close, getting closer?
Very close.
Alright.
Um, three comments I I wanted to make. Um one was on the CIP plan and the. Report we had tonight from the chair, which I thought was outstanding, and I wanna commend their hard work on CIP and getting to you what that looks like. Um and I specifically wanna comment on year one, which is important because that's what the townspeople vote on. Um and frequently, that's subject to the pressures of the entire budget. I E, um that's where things are cut when people panic. It could be the board of finance, it could be the public hearing, it could be the town meeting. Um so I I urge you to balance. Your responsibilities of the overall town budget with the CIP plan. Uh as I said at your last meeting, I think it's important that the school projects go forward. Um so I think you have like a macro look at everything. Uh make sure that happens. With respect to the town meeting process that was thrown up a couple of times tonight. I thought one of the biggest shortcomings of the SBC or School Building Committee of, which I was a part of and their responsibility for. Was the way that town meeting happened prior to going to a referendum. The the absence of discussion at that meeting, and even worse, the prescribed. Going to referendum without a vote at that meeting, which is a normal part of our town meeting process, uh but if you might recall. In that meeting, the attorney wrote the call in a way where we automatically adjourned the referendum. I strongly advise we never do that again as a town. We are a town meeting form of government. We decide things in town meetings. Uh so I I wanted to bring that up. And and lastly, I I applaud your effort to open up the meeting to discussion. Um and hope you continue to use good judgment doing that. Uh but I wanna say that uh tonight um. A comment was passed on this side of of the aisle, uh that they hoped. Uh people like me on the Republican Town Committee are satisfied with a particular outcome. When I come before you, as anyone who comes before you, we're acting in the best interest of the town as citizens of the town. And I I'm also uh a nationalized citizen, so as my wife likes to point out, I could never be vice president or president. Um I hope that's not relevant. Um I hold it up because I have a member of stores trying their whole church, but that's not relevant. I don't think any of, anyone should be characterized by anyone in these meetings on what organizations they're part of. And I thank you for your time.
John, did you have something?
Yes, I, once again, I um don't mind being characterized for whatever I do, but. As I said last week, and I'll come back this week. Having the public involved in these meetings is a positive good. Tonight, we had um. Somebody say something, and the board was discussing there about uh. Uh about an issue and. I was the one this time said, hey, you know, uh didn't we decide that we don't have to have a referendum? Okay, so that's. That's adding to the conversation. I'm glad I said it. Last week, uh Mike brought up the question about the uh.
Uh asbestos.
Asbestos. So this is the way that our town meetings ran forever and ever. Until again, our previous first select person came in and closed it down. That's up to you, basically. It's not. Uh it's not by law. If you wanna do it, you can. If you don't wanna do it, you don't have to. And I say that I think you should do it, because it's good for the town.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Steph. I just, Steph Summers, why I wrote, I just wanna clarify that we do, we do have situations, and I think the uh. The uh uh firehouse facilities issue may be, may be one that fits into this, but. Every year when we do the budget, of course, we have an annual town meeting. We do not vote at that meeting. Um we vote on the budget and referendum. So my view is. Uh that that is a course that is, that has plenty of precedent and uh. And and there's a town meeting associated with it. It's just not a vote on the subject at hand. Um and I also wanna say.
Well, that's what I was thinking about when I said.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna say too that um I appreciate what Jen Goodell said, because. I understand it does make for a a, you know, more complicated meeting and maybe. Uh difficult for you all. Uh you know, I abide to the. To the board here on your choice on that, because I know um I probably piped up more than I should have, so. Um so you know, I'm perfectly comfortable with uh doing the present to speak before and after, if that's what you all decide to do.
Well, I I always felt hemmed in by that, so that's why I changed. Um. Have a hand though, so. Oh, Jen, do you, are you?
I think you forgot to put it.
I think you forgot to put it down.
Very good.
And I will take Mike's word on that.
Good morning.
Having having insight. Uh yeah, uh it's good in welfare. Did you print off that list for me from human services?
What's your glasses on, man?
Look at that, it's on there when I put my glasses on.
You've got quite an admin if I do say something, sorry.
I do. She's stupendous. I don't know what I'd do without her. We have an idea.
Thank you, Mike.
Good in welfare, from our human services department. They are looking for food items for um the upcoming Easter baskets. Food food share. Uh they they're asking that people, please do not donate expired items. They cannot uh. If if they're open or expired, they cannot accept them, and they won't hand them out. Uh but they are looking for the following items. Hot chocolate, pasta sauce, plastic jars preferably, mashed potatoes or a rotten pipe. Meal starters like hamburger helper, peanut butter, jelly, juice, coffee, tea, canned carrots. Crackers and canned fruits. Or you may make a monetary donation to the Wellington Food Pantry or Fuel Bank. And mail to Forty Old Farms Road in Wellington, and they are also currently, oh, they are currently not accepting. Clothing, furniture, household utensils and cookware, adult incontinence items, shoes or appliances. And they uh gradu- they they uh appreciate your generosity. So if you've been helped out, you can need at this time of Easter. Um. I would second that motion, and unlike the board of finance, I'm gonna ask for a vote. Are you gonna pay for a good journey? Uh aye. Okay. Thank you very much for attending.